Members, we now come to the session on the administration of justice and legal administration. We welcome Mr. Paul Lam, the Secretary for Justice, Mr. Horace Chan, Deputy Secretary for Justice, and also Ms. Esther Long, the Judiciary Administrator and her team. I now invite the Secretary for Justice to deliver the opening remarks, and then we will hear from the JA. And then I will open the floor for questions. Members, if you wish to speak, please press the Request to Speak button now. We will first hear from the SJ. Mr. Paul Lam, please.
Thank you. Chairman, members, under the National Fourteenth Five-Year Plan, the Hong Kong Special Administrative Region is positioned as a center for international legal and dispute resolution services in the Asia-Pacific region. With a fine tradition of the rule of law and an international landscape, Hong Kong is also the only common law jurisdiction in our country. The Department of Justice will fully support and contribute to unleashing Hong Kong's unique strengths under one country, two systems, and will unremittingly reinforce our rule of law regime to open up more development opportunities for the local legal sector. The total estimated expenditure of the DOJ for 2020-2025 is about $2,454.42 million, marking an increase of about thirty percent over the revised estimate for the last financial year, 2023 to 24, but a slight increase of about one percent over the original estimate for the last financial year. The main reason for the need to lower the original estimate for 2023 to 24 is that we lowered the estimated expenditure on court costs and expenses payable for briefing out cases to barristers, solicitors, and other professionals in private practice in response to the latest developments and results of relevant judicial proceedings. The questions raised on the estimates of expenditure for this year show members are particularly concerned about three areas of our work: rule of law education, legal and dispute resolution services, and foreign-related legal talent training. Let me briefly address the following salient points. First, promoting the Constitution, Basic Law, the Hong Kong National Security Law, and the Rule of Law Education. The Steering Committee on Rule of Law Education, chaired by me, was set up by the DOJ in February last year to strengthen the understanding of the Constitution, the Basic Law, the Hong Kong National Security Law, and the Rule of Law among different sectors of the community. The first phase of the Training Leader Program concluded in December last year. We had attendance from over twenty organizations undertaking youth-related and community work. In view of the warm response, we will launch a second phase of the TTL Program within this year. The DOJ will continue to support programs related to the Constitution, the Basic Law, and the Hong Kong National Security Law for the general public and the youth. And we will release information related to the rule of law from time to time, such as uploading a source book on the Basic Law to the DOJ's webpage for public access late last year. This will reinforce the core value of the rule of law. We will also add materials about the safeguarding national security ordinance that was just passed. Second, promoting Hong Kong as a center for international legal and dispute resolution services. The DOJ will lead the legal profession to visit about enrolled countries to promote Hong Kong's robust legal system and solid foundation of the rule of law. Last month, that is in March, Deputy Secretary for Justice visited the Middle East. Next month, I will visit that region to enhance exchanges and deepen cooperation between Hong Kong's legal profession and people in the Middle East, so as to tell good stories of Hong Kong. On optimizing legal framework, the mainland judgment in civil and commercial matters reciprocal enforcement ordinance took effect on the 29th of January this year to reduce the risks, legal costs, and time usually involved in cross-boundary enforcement of such judgments. With the staunch support from the central government, the International Organization for Mediation, upon establishment, will have its headquarters in Hong Kong. IOEMET will specialize in resolving international disputes by means of mediation. This will be the first international intergovernmental organization to set up headquarters in Hong Kong. This will attract disputing parties and professionals such as mediators and lawyers to pick Hong Kong for mediation. This will further enhance Hong Kong's status as the capital for mediation and boost other related economic activities. Now, training foreign-related legal talent. One new measure under the 2023 Policy Address is to set up the Hong Kong International Legal Talent Training Academy. The academy will focus on legal practice and regularly organize practical legal courses, seminars, and exchange activities to raise Hong Kong's profile as a regional capacity building center. This will add value to the Hong Kong legal profession and contribute to our country's development of foreign-related rule of law. To this end, the DOJ will set up a training, a dedicated office, and an expert committee for this committee to prepare for the establishment of the academy. Meanwhile, the DOJ will continue to take forward smoothly these accountment programs for local legal talent with a number of international bodies to provide training and exchange opportunities for legal talent. In the future, we will continue to promote our working on all fronts to foster development of the legal sector and strengthen the rule of law in our community. Let me stop here and welcome questions from members. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
I would now invite the Judiciary Administrator to deliver her opening remarks. Thank you. I will now brief members on the draft estimates for 2024 to 25 and the work in the year ahead. The draft estimates of 2024 to 25 for the judiciary is $2,639,610,000, an increase of $141,000,000 or 5.7% over the revised estimates for 2023 to 24. The net additional financial resources required for the next year are mainly for: one, the creation of two additional judicial posts and an addition of four non-judicial posts; second, the filling of existing judicial and non-judicial vacancies; three, the additional operating expenses arising from price adjustments to major and essential contractual services for court operations, including information technology support, security control, guarding, and security screening services. On judicial manpower, the establishment of such posts stands at 211. The number of serving judges and judicial officers, or JJOs, is 160. We propose increasing two judicial posts in the lands tribunal to cope with the additional caseload arising from the passage of the land compulsory sale for redevelopment ordinance. In recent years, the judiciary will conduct more frequent open recruitment exercises to fill their judicial vacancies at various levels. The latest round of recruitment exercises for district judges and judges of the Court of First Instance of the High Court were launched in July and October 2023, respectively, while that for permanent magistrates was launched in April this year. The judiciary will continue to monitor judicial manpower and engage deputy JJOs to meet operational needs as far as practicable. Now, non-judicial manpower. In 2024 to 25, there will be a net increase of four civil service posts, including the lapse of three time-limited posts, deletion of four posts, and the creation of eleven posts for meeting operational needs, including: one, the implementation of a new initiative to update and streamline the statutory compulsory sale regime; two, the new arrangement for mutual service of judicial documents in civil and commercial proceedings; and three, coordinating large-scale judicial exchange and visit programs. And now come to the overview of the judiciary's work and operation. In 2023 to 24, the judiciary continued to cope with the challenge of a persistently heavy workload at various levels of court. Overall, we managed to dispose of this caseload that is slightly higher than before COVID in 2019. The heavy caseload was compounded by various factors, and that led to delays in postponement of court hearings. And we also saw an increase in cases that required longer trial and preparation times that added to the already heavy caseload. This means although we managed to meet the target court waiting times for most civil cases, we continue to fall short of the targets for criminal cases. The judiciary has been taking proactive and multi-pronged measures to expedite the processing of cases. We give priority to cases related to the 2019 anti-extradition amendment bill incidents and national security cases. Many such cases require longer trial periods and processing times. Our measures include: one, engaging additional judicial manpower; two, enhancing courtroom capacity; and three, providing additional court facilities for providing more settings or more setting hours. We also adopt alternative measures where appropriate and strengthen case management. We give priority to the NT EAB and NS cases. As at the end of February this year, the judiciary had disposed of around ninety-three percent of the over 2,300 NT EAB cases and around eighty-seven percent of the over 200 NS cases brought at various levels of court. However, due to the deployment of judicial resources to prioritize those cases, the average court waiting times for criminal cases were inevitably affected. Since most of the NT EAB and NS cases have been set out for trial this year and next year, their impact on court waiting times for other cases is expected to gradually ease by then. We will continue to closely monitor the court waiting times and, where practicable, consistently seek improvements. In 2023, the judiciary was faced with the continued influx of cases related to non-reformant claims. From 2016 to 2023, around 20,000 judicial review leave applications and related appeals were filed to the court, amongst which some 13,000 cases had been disposed of. Among 230 cases, which represented three percent of the leave applications disposed of, were granted leave by the CFI. Over the last three years, we generally managed to dispose of an average of around 1,500 cases a year, which was comparable to the average number of cases received in each year. We will continue to deploy additional and dedicated manpower and streamline processing procedures with a view to expediting the disposal of both the backlog and incoming cases as far as possible. Now, greater use of technology. The judiciary is committed to making greater use of technology to enhance the efficiency of court business. Over the past few years, we launched a number of new and major technology initiatives. These include the development of the Integrated Court Case Management System, enhancing audiovisual facilities to enable broadcasting at court premises, upgrading video conferencing facilities, extending the e-appointed system, managing the digital evidence and exhibit handling system, piloting the implementation of voice-to-text function in courtrooms, and promoting to practitioners the application of technology in handling judicial matters. In particular, the ICMS is being implemented across all levels of court in phases for handling court-related documents and payments through electronic means. It is already in place in most civil proceedings in the district court and summons cases in the magistrate's court. Among thirty-six percent of law firms have registered under the ICMS. With an overall utilization of forty-three percent for new cases, the system will be extended to other levels of court, particularly the High Court, where the bulk of heavy civil litigation is handled. To facilitate quicker and wider adoption of technology in court operations, we have set a target, and that is by 2026, we will make it mandatory for all representative litigants to use this electronic litigation platform. We are consulting stakeholders on our proposals and implementation details. Meanwhile, we will also continue our efforts to promote the ICMS to encourage wider adoption of this system. Remote hearing is another major tech initiative. From 2020, we have conducted eighteen hundred remote hearings involving civil proceedings. The response has been positive. Our goal is to introduce the Court Remote Hearing Bill into the Legislative Council within this year, which seeks to provide a clear legal basis for the courts to conduct hearings remotely where appropriate, having regard to relevant factors as well as the dual requirements of open justice and fair hearing. Another initiative the judiciary is actively pursuing is live broadcasting of selected judicial proceedings outside court premises. This measure can enhance the transparency of court procedures and public confidence in the judicial processes. The judiciary has been conducting trial runs of live webcasts of selected court of final appeal cases since January this year. Upon completion of the trial runs, we will review and consider the way forward for live casting of court proceedings in the long run. Now, family justice reforms. Following the passage of the Family Procedure Ordinance in June 2023, we now have a clear legal basis to prepare a single set of accessible and comprehensive court procedural rules applicable to all family and matrimonial proceedings at the family court and the High Court. Under the new law, we have implemented since October 2023 a new family master system in the family court to ease the heavy workload of family judges. At the same time, the Family Procedure Rules Committee, which was formed in August last year, is preparing the family procedure rules. Once the draft rules are ready, we will consult the stakeholders before submitting them as subsidiary legislation to the Legislative Council for scrutiny. Finally, the judiciary will continue efforts to explore feasible ways and means of enhancing the efficiency of judiciary administration and providing better quality services to court users and members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. The two secretaries have given us a very detailed briefing, so we don't have much time left. The floor is now open to all members. I will give each member four minutes. So please specify whether you are putting your questions to the Secretary for Justice or the Judiciary Administrator, Mr. Ambrose Lam. Thank you, Chairman. My question is for the JA. Now, the judge establishment is now standing at 222. Now, actually, 166 judges have been appointed. The number may vary, but that's around the estimated level. I don't know when did the situation begin. Now, if you look at the case setting down time as the Court of Final, as the Court of First Instance, in year 2012, you had to wait 180 days, much further than 120 days, which is the target. Now, in 2018, there was not a KPI anymore. In 2023, you have to wait 352 days before you have your court appearance. You fail to hire judges for a prolonged period. We have asked many questions about this situation. Now, I've asked the Financial Secretary as well. Is it because the Financial Secretary is unwilling to allocate resources to appoint judges? It seems not to be the case. Now, about the sixty vacated seats, let us remove them so that the Financial Secretary wouldn't have such a hard time answering our questions. Ms. Esther Long. Over the past few years, we have seen a manpower shortage among judges, but we have to maintain the same size of establishments. That's why we engaged in open recruitments more regularly. The fact that Mr. Ambrose Lam quoted did not include the new judges recruited from the latest round of recruitment process. Later this year, when these new judges are appointed to the courts, the vacancies will be filled and the manpower shortage will be alleviated. For criminal case, yes, we are falling short of the target because we have seen a lot of complicated cases in recent years, taking up much more time than before. And also for pre-trial procedures, a lot of time was spent, and that's out of the court's control. So by this year and next year, more anti-extradition amendment bill cases will be, will have the court appearances. And after that, the situation will become better. Now, concerning the targeted waiting time, we will review the target. Next, Ms. Doreen Kong. Thank you, Chairman.
I rarely find that governments' bodies are in need of more money, but I think this is the case for the judiciary. In year 2024 to 25, the estimate is just $2.6 billion. That's way too conservative and way too little. I support the judiciary asking for more money. Rule of law needs to be built with money. Now, if you look at JA 009 reply, that's my question. I am pleased to learn that you will adopt technology to expedite the process. But you need to have sufficient manpower. Now, you mentioned about family proceedings and so on. In new areas, we need more manpower to discharge the new duties. Now, $2.6 million are just a bucket, a drop in the bucket. Now, if you look at Water Supplies Department, they get four times as much as you are getting. And it is so difficult to hire judges. So starting next year, will you ask for more provision? Now, the schedule in the annex say Court of Appeal of the High Court handling appeal cases from magistracies, 208 days of waiting. Now, for district court criminal case, 400 days, the target is 100 days. Magistracy, so on. I would not read them out one by one. So you have achieved the targets for certain level of courts, but for some other level of courts, you are not performing well. So how are you going to cut down the waiting time? JA, thank you. As mentioned in the reply, over the past thirteen years, the government has acceded to our funding request in full. Now, we have increased our size of our establishment mildly, but we are spending public money. We need to be prudent. Concerning the shortage of judicial manpower, besides open recruitment, we are also appointing deputy judges. From within, we are also hiring barristers to act as deputy judges. Altogether, we have a deputy establishment of 100 to alleviate the stress. For supporting staff, we hired non-civil service contract staff as well as civil servants to maintain our operation. For time-limited position, if they are no longer necessary, we would cancel them. When necessary, we will hire time-limited staff to implement certain projects. So by making use of technology, that means more one-off investments, and also we are seeing an increase in our recurrence expenditure. Now, after the commissioning of the new district court, the recurrence expenditure will grow by some three percent per annum. We will try to meet the additional manpower requirements by internal redeployments, but if needed, we will ask for more provision. Next, Ms. Laitong Kwok.
Thank you. My question is for the JA. Question 247, reply JA 012. That's a question raised by Reverend Kuhn. Now, the number of leave for appeal granted by the Court of First, Court of Appeal. Now, between 2019 and 2023, the number stands at ninety-five percent per year. Ninety-five percent of those leave were in relation to non-reformant claims. The trend has even risen in 2023. From some 1,300, the number has climbed up to 2,089. Paragraph eight in the script of the JA, she mentioned that in 2000, from 2016 to 23, some 20,000 JR leave applications were received, amongst which some 13,000 cases were disposed. In other words, there are still 7,000 cases outstanding. The capacity is some 1,500 cases a year. That's the number handled by the judiciary each year. So the number is similar to that of new applications. So even without an increase in the number of application, the 7,000 cases would never be processed. Now, I've just read the websites of the judiciary. If you look at the new judgments handed down, you can tell the court is still handling JR cases from year 2019. After filing a judicial review application, the non-reformant claimants can stay in Hong Kong. According to the immigration policy, they will not be deported. Now, we have some 15,000 non-reformant claimants remaining in Hong Kong, and the number has not climbed down. Now, my question is, this year, what have you done or what will you do to further streamline the procedures of handling non-reformant claims? When do you expect you can clear all the backlog of cases? Especially when we are seeing a return of the cases. What are you going to do? I was disappointed that among the new judges appointed, we don't see any new judges appointed to handle non-reformant claim cases specifically. Ms. Esther Long. Thank you, Mr. Lai, for your question. We are very concerned about the increase in number of non-reformant claim cases as well. We can handle some 1,500 cases each year. All these cases must be heard by criminal judges at the High Court. Now, for the past few years, we were dedicated our resources to deal with the extradition bill cases. Actually, CFO judges can also deal with these cases. Yes, so besides serving judges, we are also engaging retired, experienced judges to help us process these cases. In the future, we will continue to increase our manpower in dealing with this. This is the major issue. If we can have more hands on deck, then we can clear the backlog faster. In the past, we were able to catch up the number of new applications made each year. Now, we have to add more manpower to clear the backlog. So you don't have a timetable. There is no adding sites. Now, the number of cases passed by the immigration department is still on the rise, so I can't give you a specific time when we are going to be able to clear the backlog. Ms. Lam Chen Sing.
Thank you. My, I would like to ask a question on JA 009, a question asked by Ms. Doreen Kong. Waiting time for court appearances. Now, for most levels of court, the target is met, but for some, they are not. For example, Labor Tribunal, from appointments of case to appearance, the target is 30 days. Year 2023, the actual waiting time was 38 days. For labor disputes, we understand that the number has increased. If you look at the 2023 PWIF application, there was a 60% increase compared with the past year. So for those employees who, who did not get paid, they needed to apply for the PWIF. Now, we often heard about closures of businesses. Unfortunately, we are going, we may be seeing another increase of labor dispute cases this year. Then the waiting time will be even longer. We hope there will be more tribunal officers dealing with these cases. So every year, we would have to approve the remuneration adjustments for judicial offices. Now, since we have this longstanding vacancy, all along, we only have some 160 judges among the 222 seats available. So how can we refer to this situation? The Labor Tribunal is different in that litigants are not represented by a lawyer, and the officer would seek to process the case expeditiously. Some employees need to wait for a judgment before they can get compensated.
The officer would seek to process the case expeditiously. Some employees need to wait for a judgment before they can get compensated. So for those courts which fell short of the waiting time target, like the tribunal, like Labour Tribunal. Can you offer more resources in terms of manpower or technology to prioritize those cases first? Thank you.
This is similar to another previous question. Thank you. Now the Labour Tribunal, the latest figures show, and we have looked at the procedures at the tribunal. The latest waiting time has gone down to thirty-six days. This is in line with our target. We will closely watch the manpower and waiting time at the Labour Tribunal. The person who hears cases at the Labour Tribunal is at the level of the magistrate. We can. Deploy judicial officers to speed up the hearings at the Labour Tribunal. We take a multi-pronged approach. We step up recruitment. We also promote these posts to the legal sector. That's why we achieved good results in the recruitment of district judges. This shows our promotion worked. Doctor Kennedy Wong. Thank you, Chairman. Two, eight, four, five, S J O three, four. My question is about criminal prosecution. In two thousand twenty-two, Government Council. Handled two thousand nine hundred eighty-three cases. In two thousand twenty-three, that figure has gone up to three thousand five hundred fifty-four cases. Roughly a twenty percent increase. Now another figure on the briefing out expenses. Twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, a hundred and twenty billion dollars or so, a record low. My question is. Is that the case in two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four, and what's the outlook like for two thousand twenty-four to twenty-five? Two, eight, four, eight, S J O three, seven. This question has to do with the constitutional order. Their reply mentions the promotion of the constitution, a basic law. So there's a lead office and there's a steering group on promoting the basic law and constitution. The lead office was set up in two thousand twenty-two. Lead office takes over the functions of the dispute avoidance office. So my question is, is there some sort of overlap between the lead office and the dispute avoidance office? Is there room for saving resources there? Two questions. Now the question about criminal cases and briefing out cases. The number of cases for prosecution. Depends on. Our law enforcement agencies and. The situation in the community. The law enforcement agencies look at the cases, they find enough evidence, and then the cases come to the prosecutors. Of course, I would very much like to see the figure as zero, so it's hard to comment on the trend in that figure, that is. The criminal prosecution cases. Law enforcement gives us cases and then we look up the prosecutorial code. If appropriate, we proceed with prosecution. Now on the briefing out cases. We do have internal guidelines on when to brief out the case. We look at our manpower, the point, the length, the complexity of a case. So it's hard to generalize. I cannot really point to a pattern. It really depends on the situation from year to year, but we do strictly follow our protocol on briefing out cases. On the second question, I want to clarify a point. We have the lead office, Legal Enhancement and Development Office under the D O J. Since I took over as the Secretary for Justice. I set up this lead office. The lead office. Replaces the former E D A R office or inclusive dispute avoidance resolution office. I set up the lead office because. I want to have a think tank-like unit to help me with policies. So the lead office takes a lead in promoting rule of law, and that includes promoting the basic law and the ba- constitution. But promotion. Falls to the shoulder of not just the lead office, it's all hands on deck. Other departments also take part in promoting the basic law and the constitution. The lead office takes a lead in policymaking, but there is no overlapping. Miss Kam and Khan, Chairman. My question is J A oh, oh, six, oh, oh, seven, oh, oh, eight. J A oh, oh, eight vacancies among. High Court judges. I'm concerned about the vacancies among the judges at the court. The first instance, there were eight, nine, and twelve vacancies. From two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four respectively. We need judges to ensure justice. Every year, we spend one point four billion dollars on bogus refugees' applications. Can we offer judges better pay? I think people don't mind better pay for judicial officers. While at the same time we set performance targets for judicial officers, say, judges have to be handed down by a certain time, and we need to speed up the handling of. Applications from bogus refugees. And for the lands. Tribunal. We are speeding up the compulsory sale of land. Is there an increase in the establishment for the Lands Tribunal? So I want to find out more about the resources in the judiciary. Now, J A oh, oh, six, training. This year there will be four point two million dollars. That's more than previous years. So what are the plans for training? This year marks the tenth anniversary of the holistic approach to national security. Today is also the first national security education day since we. Got the S N S O passed. So does the four point two million dollars cover training on our country's development? Or their arrangements on those fronts? Two questions for the judiciary administrator. Thank you. The shortage of judicial, of judicial manpower is a priority for us. As I said just then. We will have more frequent recruitment exercises. There is an exercise going on. We just completed the exercise for district judges and high court judges, and we will start the recruitment of magistrates. Last year, we stepped up publicity and we explained. The work of judicial officers. The results of recruitment exercises this year are encouraging. We achieved good results about recruiting district judges. We are confident that we will be able to fill more vacancies at the High Court. We will continue with the work. We will also have deputy judges. Now on the point about the Lands Tribunal. The government amended the ordinance on compulsory sale. Because of that. We will propose creating two judicial posts at the Lands Tribunal. There will be seven support staff members at the Lands Tribunal. Because we anticipate a possible increase in cases going to the Lands Tribunal, so that's our response. Now on judicial training. As I said in my written reply. Covid is over. The Judicial College has stepped up judicial exchanges. This means stepping up exchanges with the mainland courts for our judges to learn about the mainland's legal system. Among other issues, there will be more talks for judicial officers. There will be more. Mutual visits, reciprocal visits between Hong Kong judges and their mainland peers. We will also step up exchanges with other common law jurisdictions. Chairman, on the holistic approach to. National security and the reciprocal reinforcement and recognition of mainland judgment. On these areas. We need to work on these areas. And we need to see if there's a need for larger changes in how we deploy the judicial resources. Mister Tony Te. J A double, oh, nine. And oh, one, eight. J A oh, oh, nine. The J A just told us. The Lands Tribunal. The annex to the reply shows. A. Fairly short waiting time. The target is ninety days. In two thousand twenty-nine, the actual waiting time was thirty-two days at most. So the Lands Tribunal was fairly efficient. But we anticipate more cases due to changes to the law on compulsory sale. That's why the judiciary. Proposes more manpower. So does that mean there's a distinction to be drawn between waiting time and manpower? We need more clarification. Now on J A oh, eighteen. Now there is this office for building management mediation officers. Two hundred and fifty-seven visits for mediation. There's pre-mediation talks. Premediation consultations and mediation talks. My question is. What's the success of this scheme? Has the government reviewed this? Two questions. I thank Mister Te for bringing up the question about the Lands Tribunal. For this financial year, we propose increasing two judicial officers at the Lands Tribunal. That's because of the changes to the law on compulsory sale. That change may lead to more cases going to the Lands Tribunal. This will have a bearing on not just the waiting time. Each case is complex. We need more judicial resources. To handle each case. Once a case starts, experience shows. Eighty percent of the past cases required two case, two years to go through all the proceedings because technicalities. Are involved, experts are involved, so we need more manpower to deal with those cases. Now about the various kinds of cases at the Lands Tribunal. We provide mediation. We have a task force. Offering mediation services for building management. This service has been around for many years. Experience shows. Mediation. Comes with a success rate of thirty to fifty percent in resolving a dispute. And that's one direction the Lands Tribunal is going. We encourage disputes to a party to try alternative resolution instead of taking people to court all the time. The experience of the Lands Tribunal shows. In two thousand twenty-three. More than forty cases were concluded. More than eighty percent of the cases did not have to go to the court. Alternative resolution. Helped resolve those cases. We will continue with promoting that effort.
I just have a suggestion. Now waiting time may not be. The only indicator to indicate shortage of manpower. Please switch on Mister Tony Te's microphone. Then we need to pay attention to the efficiency and the experience of the judicial officers handling the cases. So if you just look at the table, one may think that the Lands Tribunal does not need any additional judicial post since the efficient is so high. Now time is very tight. At. Four thirty, at four minutes, thirty seconds, your mic will be turned off, so please be mindful of the time. Mister Candyflower. Thank you, Chairman. J A zero, one, six, Mister Ambrose Lam's question. Under the judiciary, the bailiff. The bailiff services, among the sixty-three thousand service requests, only forty-three thousand were successful, so the success rate was only seventy percent. So will the government improve the success rate of the bailiff's services? Now we have the real name registration. System for mobile phone numbers. So before delivery of the, before servicing the documents, will the bailiff. Contact the recipient via mobile phone. Numbers. And also if the party, if the recipient's party is away from Hong Kong and lead to failure of service. For the penalty and so on, is there a readdress mechanism or P U mechanism? J A. Thank you. In the reply. We mentioned that the bailiff's services. Would be delivered in accordance with the law. So these include serviced by post, in person. And serving the document at the last known address. So there is a set of rules to follow. The bailiff will not consider the surface a failure after just one attempt. The bailiff's session needs to complete a certain set of procedures before applying to the courts. To register a surf, a surface as failed. Now for inquiries. Individuals may, may make inquiry with the relevant court registry or office. So we are dealing with each case very seriously. The success rate of seventy percent is very low. Now it seems that it is very easy for the recipient's party to avoid the surface of documents, so I think we need to improve the arrangement. J A, thank you for your suggestion. We will continue to monitor the. Results. And seek room to. Improve our workflow to enhance the success rates, but there are lots of factors out of control. Mister Chu Guokeng, thank you, Chairman. J A zero, zero, three, my own question. The Resource Centre for Unrepresented Litigants. Now I've received some complaints. When parties. Went to the Resource Centre to get the form. Now they specified. The relevant piece of law they would like to inquire on. However, the staff at the Resource Centre rejected the request. For reason that they would not provide legal advice. So the litigants had to. Seek legal advice elsewhere and then come back to the Resource Centre just for the form. So what is the threshold or definition of offering legal advice? If the staff manning the Resource Centre cannot answer inquiry of litigants.
If the staff manning the Resource Center cannot answer inquiry of litigants, why do you call it a resource center? Let's just set up a counter and let people get the forms. Or maybe we can learn from the mainland and deploy robots to answer questions. That may be more helpful. J A.
Thank you. The Resource Center for Unrepresented Litigants seeks to provide information on court procedures for litigants who need to undergo certain court procedures. The Resource Center does not provide legal advice. Now if you're asking whether the, whether the case is viable. Is there a high chance to win? Or explanation of a certain piece of law through the Resource Center cannot help you? However, concerning which form to get and other primary information, I think the Resource Center is able to help. Now after the meeting, we will once again remind our staff that we should do our best to provide the help needed to the public. If not, we should explain why we cannot. Thank you. I hope that you can improve this service promptly. Doctor Professor Priscilla Leng.
Thank you. Reply number J A zero twenty-one. And reply twenty. First of all, J A zero twenty-one, my own question. About the remote hearing. Now according to the reply. The progress is satisfactory. However, the cost for each case is four hundred thousand dollars. And also you have to engage in outsourced service. Now I'm concerned about this. Now the H K E A A and also the ordinary district council election held last year, those were all provide, those were all, well, were all conducted with outsourced services. Now if each hearing on average costs zero point four million dollars, how much is the total cost? Can we have our own in-house service for this service? Zero point four million dollars for each hearing, each remote hearing is too much. What about the security issue? Will foreign hackers be able to steal the information? Now about attracting young lawyers into the judiciary. The reply mentions that there has been encouraging resource. Legal practitioners with some experience have been attracted into the system. Now I don't think we can address this issue simply with higher pay. Now for those with a lot of experience, who can serve as the High Court or the Court of Appeal, they don't care about money, it's about mission and fulfillment. So I'm very concerned how you're going to attract more top-tier lawyers into the system. J A. Thank you, Professor Leng. Now about broadcasting of hearing. Starting early this year, on a pilot basis, we have conducted three courts of final appeal trials with live broadcasting. We're going to have a few more in May. So this is a pilot program. We don't have a fixed, we don't have fixtures in the courtroom for live broadcasting. We do have in courthouse broadcasting. And at the legal year opening, we would broadcast the live events through our website. So we are using that experience in engaging outsourced contractors. We have a lot of security systems to prevent hacking. I agree with Professor Leng that zero point four million dollars for each hearing is on the high side in the long run. So if this program is regularized. We need to make a one-off investment in procuring our own facilities and lower the average cost for each hearing. So that's one direction. On manpower. We understand that the Court of First Instance faces the direst manpower situation. But it is very encouraging that we are able to attract more middle-tier lawyers or lawyers with um medium level of experience to serve in the heart, in the district court. This has enre, this has enriched the promotion ladder. Usually younger lawyers would serve at the magistracies and we don't have much difficulties recruiting magistrates. Usually in every recruitment exercise, we can fill all the vacancies. Ms. Conny Lam. Now secretaries and J A, we have more and more legal students learning law in the mainland. However, for students with a practicing qualification in the mainland, they can only serve as a foreign lawyer in Hong Kong. But they have engaged in a lot of litigation work in the mainland. So that's a reply S J eighteen. Now the career path for this group of law students in Hong Kong is rather narrow. So will the secretary implement more policies to attract these talents to come back? Say for example, will, will you provide scholarship to sponsor these law students to pursue a juris doctor, a juris doctorates in Hong Kong? And what is the percentage of successful candidates under the foreign lawyer registration scheme in five years' time? Now we are losing talents in many industries, in particular, the legal sector. Many young people who cannot secure a law degree candidacy in Hong Kong, they study law in the mainland, but they can't practice law in Hong Kong. So they are now serving as legal members or district councilor's assistants. So how can you help them? Practicing qualification secretary. Thank you. Now besides the D O J, a very important stakeholder in training up legal talents is the three law schools and the professional bodies. I don't have these statistics with me, but I can comment on some phenomenon. Now the member was concerned about the career path for lawyers who have practicing qualifications in the mainland. Now many of these lawyers would pursue a juris doctorate in Hong Kong so that they can get the legal qualification in Hong Kong in the shortest time. I often say that our unique strength is our common law system. We need to ensure that the professionalism is maintained. So we have to ensure that there are sufficient measures to ensure that the professional quality of these prospective lawyers are up to standard. I believe we do have sufficient channels for lawyers with practicing qualifications in the mainland to pursue further study in Hong Kong. On financial support. Various universities have different programs open to these candidates. Now we have a statutory body on law education. So I will convey members' concerns to that particular committee. So that more discussion can be had with the three law schools.
Ms. Lam also asked about the passing rate, just like other questions at the F C. Let's see if the government can find the figures. Can you look into this, S J? Mr. Martin Yao. Thank you, Chairman. S J O two six. The reply says I B R M has a number of online platforms such as the A P A C online dispute resolution platform, online arbitration platform and online mediation platform. But those platforms handle very few cases. I B R M is the first and only online platform for dispute resolution in Hong Kong recognized by A P A C. I B R M has an A P A C dispute resolution service platform. It handled just one case last year. The online arbitration platform and the online mediation platform handled just three and six cases respectively from last February to this February. The Hong Kong International Arbitration Centre handled five hundred cases and it hand, and involving money involving ninety-two billion dollars. So there is a gaping discrepancy between what I B R M handled and what the H K I A C handled. Has the S J found out with I B R M why so few people use their platform? Does that have to do with the demand for online dispute resolution? Or is it about the competitiveness of I B R M's platform? Second question. Last year, the D O J said it advised and in fact strongly advised I B R M to be more proactive in its publicity. So my question for the D O J is, how do you assess I B R M's work? Where can I B R M do better? Two questions for the S J. I thank Mr. Martin Yao for his questions. Those questions are top of mind for me too. Indeed. The figures are hardly impressive. Through the deputy S J, we set up a working group to step up liaison with I B R M. There are several factors at play. I B R M worked on its institutions and systems. It's only in mid-last year that I B R M had a well-established system. I B R M is different from the H A I A C. I B R M does not have its own client base. I B R M isn't a resolution dispute resolution service on its own. It has to find its own customer base, and this has to do with I B R M's business model. There's also an issue with promotion. The lack of a client base and the business model are factors where I B R M has to work harder. We have been recently in talks with I B R M. I B R M is a separate legal person. It's a standalone company. We also have a deal with I B R M. We work with I B R M. We monitor I B R M's work. We can appoint board members of I B R M. We also get in touch with I B R M regularly. I B R M also submits business plans to us regularly. Last year, we advised I B R M to step up. This year, we advised I B R M in very strong terms to step up. I talked to I B R M's management in personnel management and business model. I B R M needs to take bold new steps to achieve breakthroughs. We have made this point loud and clear with I B R M. After all, much public money is at stake. I'm anxious to see improvement on I B R M's side too. And then that's exactly because I B R M is using so much public money. I wouldn't have cared if I B R M were a purely private entity. I know your point. Ms. Carmen Khan would like to speak for the second round since no other members, oh, sorry, Ms. Ari Lee. Chairman.
I took part at the event of the National Security Education Day. It was a huge success. I have a question for the judiciary. It's about the electronic system. I thought that was the next one to speak, so can we speed up the process of going electronic? Can we have more resources so that the judiciary can go faster in going electronic? So this is a question for the judiciary administrator, Ms. Esteleng, please.
Thank you. In my opening remarks, I briefly touched on this. We are going on all front to boost court, the efficiency of court business through technology. One major initiative is the electronic handling of court documents and payment. We have an electronic system for files management. For several cases at the district court and summonses cases at the magistrate, those cases are covered by the electronic system. The I C M S will cover the High Court and the small claims tribunal this year. Now litigants have a choice whether to use the I C M S, but by twenty twenty-six, we're now consulting the legal profession on the proposal, and that is all representative litigants will have to use the I C M S by twenty twenty-six. So we believe by then, at least half of the cases will be handled electronically. We still have some year to go. To twenty twenty-six, we will continue with our publicity. Every month. We get more registered users and more documents handled electronically. We will consider ways to incentivize the sector's use of the system. One comment we got was to avoid payment for each and every item. So we propose a deposit system. You put money there, you don't have to pay for every single item every single time. So we considered those suggestions. Now on remote hearing. We have more than a hundred courts. We now have the technology to support remote hearing. In twenty twenty-seven, the new court building on Caroline Hill Road will be in place. We will have better technology set up, so the use of technology will be wider by then. Does any other member who hasn't spoken wish to speak? If not, I will let Ms. Carmen Khan to, I will let her speak the second round, and then we will wrap up this session. Four minutes for you, Ms. Carmen Khan. J A O O five. My question is about the applications for leave for judicial appeal, the relevant appeals and the waiting time. The judiciary gave us the figures, so I'm trying to make sense of the figures. At the quarterfinal appeal, there's a note, there's a remark. It does not provide a separate tally for judicial review cases. Why? For applications involving legal aid, this question goes unanswered. Can I get an answer? Three questions. Judiciary Administrator. The focus of this question is on judicial review cases. At the High Court. Most applications for leave for J R involve non-refusement cases, more than ninety percent. If you leave out those applications, we don't see a marked increase in J R cases, just a hundred or so each year. The rate of approval or granting of leave is on the low side, so we don't give a separate tally. Most of those cases, ninety percent of the cases have to do with non-refusement cases.
Most of those cases, ninety percent of the cases have to do with non-reform on cases. Now on legal aid, we don't give a tally for legal aid cases. That's why we are unable to provide the number. The legal aid department will have the figures. The judiciary does not keep the tally. Is the reason that the judiciary thinks this has nothing to do with the judiciary's work? On whether a litigant has legal aid, we don't see a particular need to keep a tally on those figures. That's why we do not maintain such figures. That's why when people ask us why we don't keep the figures. Because for us, policy-wise, a litigant, whether they have legal aid or not, they are a litigant. If there are no further questions, we wrap up the session here. The next session will start at four thirty-five P M on education. Thank you.